And to the republic towards which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And my meeting reminder of if you have a cellphone, of which I have none on me today, would you please put it in some type of silent configuration? If your cellphone goes off, we have a standard rule, which is you get to clean up after. All right, let's start with the first stuff. Peter?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, today is October the 18th, 2012, and we're here for the regular meeting of the Gateway Services CDD. And the chairman is present along with all four other members of the board. My name is Pete Alphman. I'm the district manager. Tony Piers, our district council's here, along with Danny Nelson, our engineer, and my laptop sitting next to me, your district operations manager. With that being said, we have a few people who've signed up to ask to address the board in what was probably the lightest agenda of all, so maybe we should give them an extra 30 seconds if you'd like.
Go ahead.
It's only one, but not two.
Well, in content, I guess, if not in weight. Gene Lamont, do you want to do address the board, sir?
Hey, thank you. I appreciate what you all do as board members, and I just wanted to come in, and I had a problem, I thought, with Al. Yesterday, I had run into a problem where tried to enter Stony Brook, and I was denied entrance to Stony Brook. And let me say, what precipitated this was that, you know, we live in a community, and everybody wants to try to get together and, you know, do a good job, and I have no axe to grind with Stony Brook or nothing like that. The problem is, I asked Al, and Al said, well, they're not supposed to, they're supposed to let you in there, they have no, they're not supposed to let you do that. And then, two or three hours, you know, he sent me a note, and said, I'll look into it. Gary, about two hours later, he sent me an email and says, if you gotta complain, you gotta complain to the board. I'm not complaining. All I'm saying is that I was denied entrance, and let me tell you what precipitated. What precipitated it was, you know, you hear good things about Stony Brook, and you hear some bad things. And what upset me was that the remark made by one of the czars on the homeowners association board that said, "The Gateway Service District is not going to tell them how to run their gate securities," is their reason, and so it upset me. So I said, "I'll drive through the gate and see if it's true." Well, I was turned down, okay? My question is, if I'm wrong, I apologize. If I'm right, something needs to be done about it. Tony, am I correct or not?
Correct from my perspective. And I've always advised the board that, as it relates to the district gatehouse and the district road within Stony Brook, that the access control individuals can ask for identification when they come in. They cannot deny anybody access to the district.
Okay. And I was, now, don't get me wrong, I don't want to do nothing to affect Stony Brook's security. They do a good job. I mean, I'm not, the idea was, when I hear what I would consider the czar saying, "Hey, you know, the heck with Stony, Gateway Service Districts." No, I, hey, I'm part of this community, I want it to work, I want it to thrive, and that's, that's the reason I'm here, and I just wanted to make note of that, that I was denied, and whatever you have to do to correct that, I would correct it.
Yeah, I ask you a question.
Ma'am.
When was it that you heard the supposed czar make that statement?
Well, it was probably in the last two weeks.
And you personally heard it?
No, I did not personally hear it, okay? But again, it's reputation. Now, if you went to a doctor, would you go to a doctor that had a bad reputation? You would go to someone that had a good reputation. If you needed attorney, and you had a divorce case, would you go to Tony? That's not his bailiwick, and that's what I'm saying. You know, some get carried away with their power, okay?
Well, it's just the herd you didn't hear firsthand, so things, stories tend to get, you know, embellished, don't they?
Oh, yeah, I understand, but again, but it's, it's, it's your reputation. You're built on a certain reputation. If you have a bad reputation, it goes through the community. I just don't want one homeowners association dictating and saying, "Well, we're God, we'll run it," and so forth. That's the only, that's, that's the only thing. I have nothing against Gateway, nothing against their gate protection, okay? I don't want to take up.
All right. You've got your five minutes. See, the green light's just starting to blink. Gene, you're, you're still good.
Oh, no, I'm not.
I just want to clarify one thing.
Yeah.
The thing that is important, though, is, and the only thing that you can personally attest to is the fact that you were not permitted access into the community.
Okay.
Regarding the other people and their personas and that type of thing, and the defense of that, that isn't what the issue really is. The issue is that. Am I okay?
Well, you're okay with that, but the only reason I went is because of the reputation that I, I've heard good and bad.
Okay.
I've heard good and bad. That's the only reason I went.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Gene.
Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got an issue with that. All right, thank you. Who's next?
Rod Senior. He wants to talk about Misk.
Misk, good afternoon, and if my green light turns amber, I don't three o'clockers very often, so please hopefully give me a bit of slack.
This is the dispensation factor.
For the record, Rod Senior, Bent Pine Drive, I noticed the cake outside, and I too want to thank my fellow residents for stepping their plate on all the various standing committees. Pete, when I suggested the creation of focused committees, such as the water and road turn up committees, we had a healthy discussion about the relative merits of functional committees versus committees with a mixed agenda emerging from different sub-communities, such as Area One. I commend the board for giving functional committees a try. I think the success that you're celebrating today is a testament to the fact that functional committees work, providing they have a defined mission and they're populated by committed and qualified individuals. I'd like to thank Ed Sichel for four years of outstanding service to the district. In 2008, I worked hard to get Ed elected, and I'm pleased that I did. He has lived up to the promises of putting the residents first and being transparent in all his actions, no matter how unpopular it may have been amongst his board colleagues. Furthermore, I thank you, Ed, for putting in all those countless extra hours of dedication between board meetings, preparing to articulate and defend your position. I know how hard you have worked, and you are a credit to our community. I, and undoubtedly on behalf of other residents, take this occasion to also thank Gail Coombs, who has unfortunately handed in her resignation this week. Gail has been with us since 2006, when Bill Knight and DMS joined the ranks. Gail has been the anchor and the intelligence behind the district's billing system, and has seen us through some tough times cleaning up the mess that Seven Trent left behind, and many billing issues that were left hanging after Bill Knight's departure. Over the years, she has held many developers' feet to the fire and has successfully collected tens of thousands of dollars in unpaid connection fees. Gail's pleasant disposition at the front desk, her skills, on-the-job knowledge, and her commitment to Gateway District will be greatly missed, and I wish her well. Looking forward past the upcoming election, I would ask the new board to focus on strategy and structure. Gary, thank you for steering us around many landmines over the past four years. I'm pleased that you were recently on an FASD, Florida Association of Special Districts' three-day course focusing on strategic planning. In the light of Governor Scott's Executive Order 1210 to bring accountability and efficiency to Florida's special purpose districts, it is timely to take a good look at ourselves in the mirror. I hope that FASD course will encourage you to steer the district to be more proactive and strategy-driven. By the way, much as I believe in personal development, I don't believe that taxpayers should be asked to pay for external courses for supervisors. Perhaps you would discuss this between yourselves and formulate a policy. Going forward, I ask the board to consider creating a strategic planning committee to allow residents to shape the future of the district. If you do that, I would stress the importance of getting qualified people on that committee who understand what strategic planning actually is. A case in point, we formed a long-range planning committee at the golf clubs some years ago, and the greatest achievement in the first year was to put locks on the golf course washroom doors. Hardly a strategic breakthrough. You get my point. Here are five bullet points, strategic options, I sound a bit like Mitt Romney, but five strategic options for your consideration in 2013. Number one, divesting the assets that the district owns in Pelican Preserve and Stony Brook. The district is one of the largest in Florida and has become unnecessarily entangled in sub-community affairs, mainly the roads and gatehouse. Allow those community HOAs to operate autonomously, like the rest of Gateway does. Mr. Pires has been the legal architect of these sub-community arrangements, and I ask you to charge him to find a way to untangle what he has done. If he cannot find an effective way to achieve this, I suggest you change your attorney. Number two, have the district employ the operations manager. I don't subscribe to the philosophy, Pete, of being wedded for life to a district management company. We've had this discussion before. I believe there's too much daylight between the board and the district staff. Perhaps being closer to our staffing situation may have prevented the departure of valuable staff like Gail, and I, and would have allowed the board some input into the recent appointment of the temporary and now permanent new accountant. I suggest you reposition the district management firm as a supplier of as-needed professional services, only as needed, not to hand them the keys to the bank, to run the board meetings, and the entire management of this district. Number three, take affirmative action against developers and professional engineering firms on the substandard lakes we've inherited. Pete, you tried to get this done at the last meeting, I credit you for that, I'm with you, but unfortunately, there was a motion abruptly made to adjourn, and I would urge the board to reopen this discussion and to vote on it. Number four, protect our reserves too easy to crack open the piggy bank to oil the squeaking wheels. For example, we've had a contingent from Griffin Drive, and we gave in to something like 50, 60 grand for trees, effectively to bail out what the developer failed to do, and also the fallout from the good work that the water advisory committee is doing. I can see it getting into hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we have to be very careful how much we spend out of those reserves. Fifth and last, turn over Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive to Lee County. Pete, you were on the record at the de-annexation hearing downtown that it doesn't make sense to have ownership if we don't have control. I agree with you. I think there should be some special consideration at the northern end of Gateway Boulevard, where the kids live in Stony Brook. I also think there should be some consideration at the southern end of Gateway Boulevard, where the schools are. Lee County made the appalling decision to locate these schools where they are and the traffic chaos that ensued, so I think we can expect them to cooperate. Other than that, I would favor a 45 mile an hour speed limit right down. Otherwise, I think it's a cash grab on the part of the sheriffs. I think the county should therefore be amenable to providing some special consideration in those areas at the north and south end of Gateway Boulevard. Thank you.
There you go. All right.
We have Chad Life. Chad?
Shade.
Shade.
Hi, I'm Shade Life. Yeah, that's all right, I'm used to that. Recently purchased a home in Timber Ridge, did that in the end of April 2012. Upon doing the survey, we discovered that there was a easement that, it's a lake management easement, that was in my backyard, that was not set at the traditional high-water mark of the lake. It was actually 23 feet short of that high-water mark, which then, if you take that 20-foot easement from its misplacement, the easement ran within approximately three feet of back edge of my house, which is preventing me from applying to extend my lanai. Discussions on this started the 1st of May. I've not been able to make a lot of progress. I've kind of been passed around from one entity to another, and nobody seems to know what direction should happen first. So I'm coming to the district, I've submitted to each board member a letter explaining the problem, complete with surveys and the picture of the county plat. Apparently, it probably started with the developer, didn't build the lake like they originally plotted, but somehow it was not corrected on the as-built plot that was submitted and accepted by the county. Bottom line is, I'm sitting here with a property that I can't really even enjoy my backyard, and I'd really like to see this addressed properly. It's been mentioned that possibly consider an encroachment. The problem I see with an encroachment is I'm really hesitant to consider spending $10,000, $12,000 on something that the district could come back in at a later date and force me to tear out. So I would like the district to evaluate the placement of this easement and see if they can accomplish its proper placement. Thank you.
I think we will receive a letter from him, correct? I mean, I wasn't the only one. I think the district should be doing something. I mean, he's, we're talking about five and a half months, and he's not off the square one yet. I understand, I've talked to Al.
You've got yours five and a half months ago?
Nope. He's talking about, he's been working on this five and a half.
Well, he purchased the property five and a half months ago, which he purchased the property that he saw.
That's not what I heard. I heard that he started this process on May 1, okay? Talking to the district. He's five and a half months into this.
Wait a minute. Could you come back up, please? What was the first date that you ever communicated with somebody?
Approximately May 1, talking to Jesse.
Who did you communicate with?
Jesse and Al.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, anyway, I think, you know, I think we have some responsibility in this, my personal opinion, and I think we should, we're here to, and we should help them, you know? We should, between Al and Danny, and, you know, get this thing done.
Okay.
Well, and what's gonna need to occur, back in August, I had a email communication with an attorney who was representing Mr. Hunt, and explained to him at that time that since it's a platted easement, that it needs to go to Lee County Board, County Commissioners, through, you know, even vacation process of the plat. And that was back in August, that we provided him with that information. And if that's the board's direction, the district initiated a process to vacate a portion of that plat, to the extent we don't need to have the 20-foot around the lake bank to maintain it.
All right. Let me just clarify from my mind, are you saying that we would take anything less than 20 feet in width from the back of this structure? You saw the property when you purchased it, correct, sir?
Yes.
So you had had a discussion with somebody who, other than here, that told you, or that was your idea? We've got a little bit of time, so we're pulling the numbers.
Upon purchasing the house, yes, we fought, we saw the survey, and the surveying company actually pointed it out to me, you know, that.
The easement line.
The easement line. The interesting part about it is, I understand the district wanted to maintain a 20-foot lake management easement. There is plenty room to do that, however, the way it's done, there's really 23 feet of no man's ground between the easement and the lake, so it's a very unusual situation.
So it's 43 feet, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so total, it's 43 feet, which brings it within three feet of my house.
Danny, why don't you go take a look at it? Anybody else have a different thought?
Well.
We can look at this on the man.
No, I'd like Andy to see it firsthand.
Well, we've got an area, but I don't think the problem is with what the facts are. I think that there's an issue with the interpretation of the facts. There's an assumption that the lot line was intended to be at the top of the bank, and I think that that's a false assumption. I think that you could find probably more often than not around Gateway examples where the, where the top of the bank and the rear lot line along the lakefront aren't at the same look. And so, nothing that says that the lake was built incorrectly or in a place other than where it was intended to be built, just because there's a gap between the lot line and the top of the bank or the water edge. The, so, there's a, there's this, I guess there's a perception that somehow that something was done wrong, and that's why this situation exists, and it's, it doesn't really necessarily impact the solution, but it might be helpful to recognize that nothing was done wrong, that's just the way it was designed, for better or worse. And the design of having a lake management or a lake maintenance easement internal to each of the lots that front a lake is reasonably uniform. As far as I know, it's absolutely uniform, but since anytime I say anything absolute, someone comes along that tells me where I messed up, I won't say absolute, but I, you know, it's pretty uniform throughout Gateway. And so, once somebody decided where to draw the lot line, drawing the easement line was, is just a mathematical derivation from that. And none of that was done by the district. That's all done by the developer when they plotted property. The problem that I think you face is that I think you've been, it sounds like you've been told more or less what the real choices are. You can either get the, the district to agree to allow you to encroach, and I'm not sure when you were first told about that, but at least within the last week or so, I've seen an email where it looks like somebody has sent you.
Right.
The paperwork for that. I understand your reservations about that, you know, using that process, but that's, as far as I know, that's all the district can do as a district. We don't have any control over plotting, replating, vacating plaits, modifying plaits, doing the engineering for plaits, you know, none of that is what is typically the district's work process. And so if you want to ask the county to redo the plat in order, you know, it sounds to me as if you've got a plausible explanation for why that makes sense, because if in this particular circumstance, there's a sizable gap, so like, like maintenance really doesn't need to be on your lot, it can be within the lake parcel itself. You know, I don't know why anybody, including the district, would object to that. We'd want to confirm it, but to me, my experience is that vacating a plat's a reasonably expensive and time-consuming and somewhat frustrating process, but, you know, you may not want to go through. But if you do, as far as I know, all the district would normally do with respect to that is acquiescing. But that we didn't make a mistake that we need to correct. So, and I guess my suggestion, you've got counsel, it sounds like, and you ought to listen to your counsel, but my suggestion would be that you reconsider whether an encroachment agreement would suit your purposes, because the same reasons you're telling us for why this easement isn't really needed in your particular circumstance is also, to my way of thinking, a very strong explanation for why really unlikely, although it's theoretically possible, but it's extremely unlikely that we would ever want to come along and disrupt, you know, your installation. We've been, the district's been around for a long time, to the best of my knowledge, we've never caused anybody to disassemble anything where we gave an encroachment agreement. So even though all the encroachment agreements we've done over the years include the possibility that if we need to, to go maintain the lakes, that somebody might have to undo what they built, it's never happened. Speaking for myself, and I believe speaking for everybody aboard, we would do everything we could to avoid having to do that, because you would be angry and it would be wasteful. And given the gap that you've got, it seems like, I can't imagine the circumstance under which we would need to come tear up your patio in order to maintain the lakes.
How close does that line come currently to the back of your, of the back of your structure?
The easement itself?
Yeah.
I've estimated to, and the survey, I estimate it to be about three feet from the edge of my building, the house itself.
When you saw that, how did you feel?
Concerned, but.
The survey was done?
Yeah, concerned, but when I looked at the county's plots, which as you find online, you can see where the easements were traditionally, starting at the high-water mark of the lake. So I thought, okay, well, this should be, you know, somebody just made a mistake, and this should be something that could be easily corrected. Well, finding out that's not quite the case. I did talk to the county, and they said, well, I need to contact an engineer firm, which they recommended one, and I got an estimated bill for that of almost $7,000. And I'm like, okay, come on.
Right, well, I think that's why I say the process of amending the plat is likely to be overkill for what the problem you have. I think personally, you're better off reconsidering applying for us to allow an encroachment within the easement. That's entirely within our control, it's much more modestly expensive, because we don't need the same level of detail as they do to redo a plat. And given the gap between your, your lot line and the actual water, I can't imagine the circumstance under which we would need to come back and exercise any rights.
And my, my only concern with an encroachment, and I was in favor of that until I read the district's agreement on encroachment, that, that the district maintains the right to any point in time to come back and force it to be ripped out and at my expense. Like, oh, boy.
It could.
So.
On the other hand, there, we have been discovering certain things that are part of the structure of the stormwater management system, which includes those quote-unquote lakes, which are really retention ponds in some of the areas, and things that are built where they're not supposed to have been built, and there may need to be access to those things for repairs, replacements, movements, fill, et cetera. So I don't want you to think that there's some absolute guarantee that that couldn't happen. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Jim? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Guy.
I'm sorry.
Do you happen to know whether the neighbors on either side of your property have a similar situation?
They do, but not nearly a degree. If you follow the county line, it does affect their lots, but it's not near to the extent. There's one on each side of me, which affects a lot, four, three, four, yeah, three, four, and five. I'm in the middle, so it kind of affects my lot.
What's affecting you?
The most severely, yes. And I've discussed it with the neighbors on either side, and they said, well, jeez, you know, they would like it dealt with, but they kind of said, let me, wanted me to find out the facts and how to deal with it, and basically let me handle it. Thanks.
Neighbors are that way.
Yeah.
What are you trying to build on it, sir?
I'd like to extend my lanai.
With concrete block walls and corners and now?
Well, just a screened lanai.
Okay, down here, where are you from?
From originally?
Yeah.
Well, I've been here for 25 years, but I'm from Iowa.
The lanai is the part that's got a covering over the top, so you're talking about the patio?
I'm talking about the screen enclosure, yeah, not, not a roof, the screen enclosure.
Understand.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry to, to the delays. Thank you.
The only other person who wanted to address this is Ed Seckel, and he's got, we've got, at least still have committees listed, so if we can, after we get through with our ceremonial activities, then we could pull them back in. So that's it, unless there's anyone else who had come in late that wanted to address the board.
Well, can we deal with the Stony Brook access, at least to?
Absolutely. I was hoping you were gonna speak up.
You're gonna get hit by me, and I'm way too close.
Either that or supervisor comments, one or the other.
Well, I'd rather not have, I don't know if Gene's still here or not, but, um, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'd rather not have, well, you know, some people actually have lives, lives, and they go places after they tell us what they want to tell us. But anyway, I just want to make sure that we did something in follow-up to his information that he had been denied access, that we've somehow communicated to the gatehouse, to the association, that that's a violation of our agreement and a violation of the, of the gate rules, and we have this complaint, and, you know, that needs to be corrected.
Could I then add on to your thing? In my best recollection, we've, we've told Stony Brook a minimum of three times that that's not going to happen. We've had argument from Mr. McCullough over the fact of his understanding of it. Again, Tony stated his thing. I'm more to the point. I'm ready right now to, based upon this, after we've already told you guys that. I'm ready right now to, based upon this, after we've already told you guys that, that we, that we take over. If, if it's not coming through loud and clear, that the district needs to take over that gatehouse and the security of the gatehouse and stop trying to accommodate you. We have been gentle people up until this point. I think we've gone way beyond that. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we take that process away from Stony Brook, and it be taken back over by the district. I'll second it. But further discussion...
Get an answer to the question?
Go.
The question was, have we communicated to the association or to the security firm or both?
Yes. Joe Tarja was here in person. Mr. McCalkough was, McCalkough argued from the podium.
He's saying...
My forward...
To Joe, advising him of the complaint from the citizen.
Do we have a...
That was today. I mean, we, I don't, I don't believe...
The email was given yesterday.
Yesterday.
I don't believe that the association's even had an opportunity to discuss this or look into it or any of this specific...
Yeah, whatever day, was it yesterday? I believe it was yesterday. That's the day Gene sent me the email. So, as soon as I got it, I forwarded.
Do we have any response?
No, not at this point.
Well, I, to my way of thinking, it's premature. We've gone through an arduous process of getting this con arranged and in place. And I, you know, there's two sides to every story, and I think we don't need to be in a rush to hear what, what, if anything, the side is. And it could well be that somebody in the gatehouse made a mistake, and that there's a need to improve the education for those, you know, those individuals. But, because we can't have this happening, but that doesn't, just because it happened doesn't necessarily mean that there's defiance, or that we're in a, in a position where we can't work together and can't continue with the process we've so arduously just recently So, I'd rather table this and wait for a response, and then see where we stand.
Is that a motion to table?
Uh, sure.
I'll second that.
He may move to table. I second the motion to table. Motion to table is a preferential motion, has to be voted on immediately.
Then, if that's the case, there should be some type of data set that we need to get a response. This shouldn't be ongoing, and it's every meeting.
It's not.
Yeah, Margaret, come on. You know darn well that the last meeting, the person that had another complaint departed. And that's why I said to Mr. Lamone, when he sent out that email, the fact of, unless somebody steps up here, we're not gonna discuss this, but this is an obvious ongoing problem.
He wasn't being denied access there.
Okay.
So, it wasn't the same thing.
Motion to table is to be voted on, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
At the present time, we have a contract, and it's my expectation that administratively and managerially, we're gonna be on top of managing that contract and assuring we have compliance.
But we can't be there every day. I mean, like, who's kidding who? District Management Services can't be there. There has to be some type of relationship of trust.
We have an onsite operations manager who ought to be in communication about these issues, and ought to either be telling us that he's being stonewalled, or that he's getting cooperation, whatever the case may be. What I've heard so far is that he forwarded an email yesterday, and we don't have a response yet, which, to me, could mean almost anything.
Let's go on.
I didn't see it.
The original motion fails since the action was to table, and it really, once the action to table occurs, there's no discussion allowed, if I'm gonna follow like Mr. Guy.
You can hold it for supervisor comments.
Voted on.
Okay, okay, all right.
I would just one, just one comment on that, and then I won't say anything more.
You were watching the debate, too.
She's commenting.
And that was the last time that Ed Sichel complained about this, the actual guard that did not allow him into the community was fired. You can't get any more proactive to take care of a problem than that. I'm just saying.
So, hopefully, we won't lop off the head of every security guard down there.
Just saying.
It's likely to be ineffective in the long run.
That sounds more reactive than proactive.
Okay, I'm gonna get my two cents in here. My feeling is that nothing has changed since the day I went up there and tried to go in, You can tell me these are public roads, you know, you can label them public road, that gate, it's Stony Brook, okay? Whether it's Mr. Lamone or Ed Sichel goes up there, it's gonna get the same answer, you know? You haven't changed the thing.
Well, you may be right. I'll say, I drove up to the gate and asked to get through, and they asked me my name, and then they let me through.
Is that right?
That's right.
There you go.
About a month ago.
So, you think maybe it would help me if I used your name?
It's possible. I don't know what to tell you the difference.
Good. Hopefully, it's gonna change. All right. We're at a point now where it has been, it was mentioned, we do have an awful lot of fantastic people that fall under the Gateway Services District, that have been volunteers, are serving, have served on a number of committees that have been providing us with some very important information. Also concurring with Rod Senior, we have this young gentleman that has spent four years of his life dedicating a lot of his life to the Gateway Services District in the position of the supervisor, which is the young man second to my right, which is Ed Sichel, who's trying to look like he doesn't know that I'm mentioning his name. Eason, for four years of service, I would like to present to him, from all of us up here, to Ed this plaque, which shows the shape of the sail, because he wanted to go for more cruises, wishing more... Additionally, go ahead. Speak, please.
No, I just say, thank you very much. I appreciate the...
We appreciate it.
Appreciate everything you've done. I told you I want one of these. I'm not sure where my wife will put it.
He always leaves me those openings for comments. What I wanted to do was, there are, with all these different committees and the various people, I would like to try to present all of these certificates of appreciation that the board wanted you all to have. This would be for the Lakes and Wetlands Working Group with Mr. Robert Geppert and Jan Greer. Would you please, would you please be so gracious as to...
I will, I will, I will.
Pass these on and say, thank you very much. Additionally, for the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee, I think Ms. Hall should come on up for an awful lot of... Thank you very much. Over committee. The chair is at Sichel. The Stony Brook Committee, which is now up to 1,300 people. Thank you. We appreciate it. Additionally, the Traffic Committee, I don't think anybody's here from Traffic. Are you? I'm so sorry. I apologize profusely.
You should be.
I am, would you be so gracious, sir?
My name is John Kostic.
Yes, you are.
Gateway Greens.
Yes, you do. Thank you. Thank you very much for your help. And last but not least, Mr. Tinkle. We appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, sir. Now, I believe there is also a proclamation that Supervisor Sichel would like to read.
Whereas Gateway Services Community Development District is a governmental unit created pursuant to Chapter 190 of Florida statute, and whereas Ed Tinkle II is a current resident of Gateway Services CDD and has been a part of the community since March 2001, whereas Ed Tinkle II is unselfishly giving of his time and talents for the betterment of the community as the current chairman of the Water Advisory Committee, vice chairman of the Road Turnover Committee, and president of the Gateway Greens Homeowners Association. Additionally, Ed is the past president of the Gateway Country Club. Whereas Ed Tinkle has been involved, has been an involved, dedicated, and committed member of the Gateway community, is unselfish in considering the needs of all of Gateway and not just the community where he resides. As Ed Tinkle is chairman of the WAC Water Advisory Committee, has spent numerous hours of his personal time researching permits, reviewing as-built documents, finding and prioritizing improvements. You gotta do more with your time. Whereas Ed Tinkle has been instrumental in development of stormwater system maps, which are being used by our vendors to perform inspection and repairs. His engineering background has been valuable in helping to understand and decipher construction deficiencies so that Gateway Services can focus on corrective measures. As chairman of the WAC, Ed has spent numerous hours of his personal time researching permits, reviewing as-built documents, finding deficient areas, and prioritizing improvements. And whereas the time Mr. Tinkle has spent in activities previously mentioned has resulted in thousands of dollar savings to Gateway Services, because without his contribution, the district would have had to turn to our district engineer to perform the same work. Whereas Edwin Tinkle has worked with South Florida Water Management District, resolving many of the district's stormwater management permit issues, and whereas the entire Gateway community will benefit from the strategy, perseverance, and determination of Mr. Tinkle. Now, therefore, we, the Gateway Services Board of Supervisors hereby dedicate and proclaim October 18, 2012, as Edwin Tinkle II Day in Gateway Services Community Development District, and invite all residents to observe this day in recognition of his accomplishments.
Just say something real, it's, it's an honor, but it wasn't just me. You all have a great staff here that I've been working with, and they've helped immensely going into all these sewer manholes and storm sewers and water lines and easements. So, you've got a, a good group. It's just unfortunate that we're having to kind of go back 21 years and reinvent the wheel and get some of this paperwork done, but if it weren't for the staff and working with Al, that's been fantastic. It's made it real easy, having Tony available to call and chase down documents when I can't find things, or get me pointed in the right direction. That helps a lot. And then also my committee, the Water Advisory Committee, the guys are really working hard to try to answer Al's wish list of things that we're supposed to try to accomplish. But again, it's an honor, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Most appreciation to everyone, really. All right, sir, what's next? There is a, by the way...
All right, I think that's next.
Where?
The lobby.
We have a phenomenal cake. Maybe they were afraid. We invite everybody to go into the lobby, if you would. There is a fantastic cake that was done for the celebration. I'm really sorry that there weren't more people, but you can take a bigger piece.
Is there any desire, Mr. Chairman, to have you...
We'll take a 10-minute break.
Have a little photo opportunity.
All right, we'll come back. We need to take that one.